I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get a chance to cover the minutes from the last meeting. Questions, corrections, non-entertaining motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor? Board of works, this is information only. Okay, I guess we have a public hearing on our budget for 2024, so I'll go ahead and open that public meeting, public hearing. Do we have any questions, comments, if everything looks as unchanged from when we had our budget meeting? Any comment from public? All right, non-entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Moving, say no, all's in favor? And then on new business, if I will jump to Mrs. Johnson.
Would you be in a particular place, just so you could hear me?
Just take your name for the record and as long as you can project.
Okay, I've always been told I have a business mouth, so I think I can project how that'd be. I'm Linda Johnson with Guardian Advocates Incorporated, the West Division. We have been here times before and really appreciate your support in the past and are looking for your support again this year. Shada, as well as myself, started to pass out my letter of intent to give you some numbers. Again, to remind everyone and anyone that might be new, we are the VACIO program, our volunteer advocates for seniors and incapacitated adults, which has lightened it to the cost of programs for children. We have the children at heart and we love them. We have continued to grow. We are now entering our seventh year for 2024. We've had a 20% increase this past year overall. And for Fulton County, you remain 8%. I think that's what you were last year. I can't, I wouldn't say for certain, but you are 8% of our client referral base of the five counties. And we continue to grow there. We currently, when we stake our numbers in the ground about July 1st, we do that from year to year so we can compare apples to apples and see our growth. And if you will, on the chart there, so I can squish it on one page, the numbers to the left are last year's numbers, numbers to the right are this year's numbers. So we have six appointed living clients. We had one death this year. We've helped and completed six. And as you can see, we had 15 referrals. That's 8% of our base. In case you're interested, 93% of the clients are a mental health type issue, which correlates to our incapacitation definition and guidelines from the Indiana Supreme Court. We have at least two cases pending. Life care centers become friends with us and we couldn't help being right along. We would ask if you would please to come, come along with us again this year and support us. Our ask for the last, I think, three years have been $5,000. We will again ask that this year. I'll make some clarifications. Our budget is up over 236,000 projected for next year. If you take that, and I know Mayor Denton among many have asked me, well, how do you come up with the numbers? How much is it possible per person? I can't tell you that because every person's needs are different and very time consuming to very, very, very time consuming. But what I can do, now that we have a few years' experience and some statistics, I can take 8% of that budget of 236,000. 8% of that, if you will, is 18,880 for, if you want to think of it in those terms. 8% of the client base sharing 8% of the cost and near that for Fulton County would be 18,880 dollars that we would need in support. We have three, what I call major donors, that come along with the 5,000 or so dollars. You folks as a council with the mayor, the county commissioners, the county council together, and then Indiana, or pardon me, Northern Indiana Community Foundation, Lauren Correa and Lucas out there and the whole group has been great to support us. We continue with that request this year. Now, if you take that 18,000 dollars and divide it by three, that's roughly 6,000 dollars. So we're, we're close to being target on. However, unfortunately, the Supreme Court or the Indiana Office of Court Services leadership that we have keeps reminding us that their pot for the grant that's a two-to-one match is dwindling and they have projected by 2025 that there may not be, aren't going to be any funds left. That has been a grant that we could ask for 75,000 as long as we have the two-to-one match. The last two years, we've been awarded 50,000. That's been in due part to some rollover that we've had because we've looked for people to hire and weren't able, and of course, we explain all that in the grant. This year, we will not have any rollover. However, I anticipate, I hope, by the end of the year, I have stuck enough pennies back that we can start an endowment for our five counties and let that start determining. I am starting to broaden, have worked all along to broaden to other donor bases. They're small. What I would consider the next step, if you want to say down or up from you folks, might be our providers, hospitals, which we've asked all along for support. Some of our other partners, the group homes, the nursing homes, and they come in anywhere from 500 and 2,500. So it's a slow process to build that up, but we, we keep looking. I keep looking for more and more grants directly every year. We have had more staff. We've kind of come along because we're sharing with the East. That was the whole, one of the concepts of merging with our sister program so we could share like our team manager, myself, our CEO. The three of us are paid 50/50, a little bit because I retired, right? And I'm still here, so I don't work very many hours. But what we do work of those three, we are shared in income with the East Division. So that helps to further costs. We look to hire another case manager and we look to hire and share between the two divisions of volunteer manager. Volunteers supporting our program, being participant, paying of and being the advocate for our clients is a big deal. It's what we're all about advocating, so we need those hands to help us. Again, that person will be, is, will be shared 50/50 with the East Division and cover all eight counties. So that's kind of what's planned. We're trying to hit the growth and hit what our needs and yet try to keep the costs down. I hope to put out an updated thing in the first quarter instead of second quarter this next year and let you all have a heads up if it looks like we're going to have to increase our ask next year. I hope not, but maybe not as much here as the other counties that share a larger percentage of our base. There, we may have to ask for some increases. But I would ask that you come along with us again this year at 5,000 dollars and I appreciate your support, your time. Thank you for letting me be here. Are there any questions I can answer? It's worked very well to be with our sister program this year. It was a lot of hard work getting it to end of last, but it has helped immensely. No questions then? Thank you, thank you, Shada. You won't want to thank me. And Shada, one thing I did, I don't know if it'll help you if you want to use it, if they want to take a vote tonight, that's just a real short pledge letter that you could, they could sign and I could take one back with me tonight and you don't have to send anyone. That's up to you and the group. Some of them have been asking me to do that to make it easier.
They said poker form?
Yeah.
I don't remember discussing that.
Well, I brought it up. It was in the list because we have this organization, this was one of them, shelter center. Well, for 23, but 24 was the one. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't. If you want to support it.
We got to do appropriation?
Yeah. Well, and, and I will be, I will be coming with you.
I know you do.
I love it.
Well, and actually, there will be an additional appropriation coming for this year and next month, so. But this, I believe Linda could, could be coming along. This is for 24, not for 23.
Correct, for 24, we wouldn't need funds until after the first year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all in the email. In order for you to get production on this and maybe have a couple more council members show up, we can move this to the next meeting. I'm sure that we'll find, we'll find a way, but.
Yeah, I mean, as far as 24, we should be able to support it.
Because that's what I said on the email, it's 24. If we wait for a couple more council members to get here and then Shada can find a way to.
I want to object that. So you can bring it back next meeting?
I can. I'll just put it on unfinished business. I'll get back to next order.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Lee, you ready?
Sure.
Thanks.
So my name is Alex Lee. I'm with Parsons for the consultant for NDOT on a US 31 study that we started last fall of last year. So we've been out and about here in Rochester at the high school for two public information meetings back in December or in early June and out and about the community. So just going to give you a quick update and answer any questions that you may have. And then likewise, I have tonight Jonathan Wallace. He's the NDOT study project manager. So in terms of the PEL study, that's Planning Environmental Linkage, and I'll talk a little bit about that. There's actually four separate studies that are going on within the US 31 corridor, but also the US 30 corridor. So here in Fulton County, in Miami County, our 31 North study spans about 26 miles, but then we have a South partner, the US 31 South team, that actually goes down to Hamilton County. You see a gap here in Kokomo because the Kokomo bypass has already been improved. Likewise, our study partner to the north and to the west is the 30 West Study Team, so they actually have Argus just to the north. And then the 30 East team that goes to the Ohio line. And you can see that gap in Fort Wayne because of the bypass that's currently there. So four study teams that are going concurrently. So what is PEL? So PEL is a federal process. It's Planning Environmental Linkage. It's actually a study prior to a traditional NDOT job. Let's say they're just replacing a bridge. They would do a federal process called the National Environmental Policy Act and study the effects of that bridge replacement. PEL, actually, you come in a little bit early. And so you have that collaboration and engagement prior to, like I mentioned, it's a study of the 26 mile corridor. So we're looking at basically, went out to the public class December and asked the public and stakeholders, like, what, what are your concerns around about 31? So PEL is a collaborative early feedback process. And so we have multiple stakeholders within the community. One of the challenges that we identified early on is the Mennonite Amish community and reaching out. So we have some stakeholders that are engaged with that and up north in Ramco and then likewise Tom to Harvest Moon and then the grocery store to the north and west of Fulton, so off of 700. So talking with Rocky, Rocky Bridge Discount Grocery, so it's an Amish-run grocery. So talking with them, understanding where they're coming from are definitely some of the challenges that we've had. But it is a collaborative process. We're taking a look at the data based on the input in public that we've heard. So what have we heard to date? And this, this is, this report's a little bit dated. This was presented back in June at the public information meeting, but at that point, we had 261 participants, over 170 comments. We probably have, probably 40 or 50 more comments since then.
All positive, I'm sure.
What's that?
All positive, I'm sure.
There's some challenges some folks have and I'll identify that in a second. But, but based on some of that, what we've heard is the mobility. So getting across 31, getting up and down 31. For instance, talking with Rochester Fire, talking with Avanae Volunteer Fire and likewise to the south, both Macy Denver Fire Station and Mexico Fire and understanding what their needs are. Likewise, talking with the schools here in Rochester, schools, what their needs are, North Miami Schools and what their needs are in terms of getting across and then up and down. So that was a large chunk, over 55%. Safety concerns, we've definitely heard about some of the challenges there. And then region-wide, statewide mobility, a little less than that, but for instance, Manel's down in Mexico, their granary down there, talking with that manager. You know, they had winter week come in in July, so he had, I think, 400-plus trucks coming in. But now he stores it and he's shipping up to Southern Michigan for processing, going back up 31. So it's coming in and around 31 and then heading back up. So definitely listening to what their needs are, some of, some of those issues. And then likewise, economic development, less or so, and some other general comments. Based on those comments and feedback that we got back from December, November, December to early June, this is what we've come up with in terms of some of the needs and purposes of the study. So took in that vision, you know, that vision, what do they think and what's some of the challenges to what are some of the purposes and needs? So like I mentioned, safety along the corridor, heard it all along, about safety at intersections. So also access control issues. We're a little bit blessed here in our 26 miles in terms of private driveways for both residents and businesses. We identified, there's 10. Most of them are down in Miami County, not up here in the Fulton County area. Likewise, in terms of cross-highway connectivity, like I said, talking about the schools, the EMS and then the safety mobility and then going back to that region-wide and statewide mobility. So improve safety, roadway safety in the corridor, meet the mobility needs of residents, businesses and services in the study area, and then hands and efficiency and reliability of 31. We're, we're kind of lucky up here in this, in this corner because what we call the level of service or the traffic movement, both existing condition today and in the future, and I have a safety graphic, but in the future, we're still running at what we call A-F, Level C in the 2045 timeframe. So in the future, it's still pretty free flow. That being said, it's B to C today. So that being said, the safety analysis, and you probably have heard it here, some of the challenges that we have, and I'll just share the graphic over this way. The heat map, the yellow is higher incidence of crashes and the severity of crashes. And so what we see here in Rochester is along the bend here, the higher incident of crashes. And then likewise, we've seen some further down in Miami, heading towards Mexico and where our study ends at Yale River County Road 300. That being said, is what are the next steps? Is we're taking a look at, based on that, the purpose of need, I'll go back to that, both safety, but also mobility. So we're taking a look at those in what we call the universal alternatives. And you have a wide range of alternatives to satisfy the needs and purposes of the study. And our engineers do take a look at all the ranges, including what we call the no build. And the no build is kind of the do-nothing. We're good, we're good, right? I've heard it within the community, kind of leave us alone, we're okay. So if I have a safety issue right out here, or I have some flooding concerns or some water concerns, I have an access concern. So we've heard the gamut. And that being said, is taking that universal alternative, we're going to whittle it down to a reasonable within to fit that needs and purposes, and then we'll come back out to the public, probably within the next month or so, Jonathan, in terms of universe.
Universe will be postponed website in the next month or so. And Level Two will be later.
So we'll have more defined screening from there.
And then the, the next public information meeting will be next spring, fall, or spring, summer.
Spring, summer. So, so in the spring, we'll be back out as we're kind of screening those down, get input to that and then finalize the study in the fall of next year. Will something happen in the winter of next year? I'm going to say no because NDOT has to consider those four study priorities, okay? And within that study quarter. And then likewise, as you may or may not know, they queue those up in five-year cycles. And so if we're in 24, you queue it up, then its earliest is 25, but NDOT will then have to prioritize where the needs are in the greatest period, you know, the greatest based on both Laporte that, that this district is, but I also have Miami County, which is Fort Wayne District. So I'm kind of split between two districts. For your information, County Road 700, our northern limit, has already been planned for fourth quarter of 2027. That will be an overpass. Just to the north of 110 will be interchange and then 10 in Argus will also be an interchange. So that will be run, not part of the study that will be run out of the Laporte District. So Q4 of 2027, just that's something to separate that in terms of from an information perspective.
That's when we'll start those projects?
They, yeah, they're in the planning process right now, so they're looking to queue that up to actually start those three. And I'm not sure if it's a bundle, but they will be programmed in that bush.
Interchange is a J-turn?
The interchange is not a J-turn. The interchange is like 25 here in Rochester. So 110 will be an interchange, 700 an overpass, late 14.
The one time we were talking about the J-turns and on New 24, you know, if you're getting towards Wall Bash, they've got those, the first I've dealt with them, and they're, they're different, something to get used to.
You have to get used to it and they're proven to be, J-turns are proven to be safer. I was just in Michigan two, three weeks ago and they, they have them, they work very well in terms of, if you know how to use them and you know what you're looking for, you get used to them kind of like a roundabout. So a roundabout, a lot of folks are concerned about roundabouts and then once you get used to it, then you can navigate it, right?
Even school buses and semis?
Even school buses and semis and, and that's one thing we all have to take in consideration is also farm equipment, so.
That was going to be my next, my question was because we have some pretty large farm equipment that spans.
Yeah, yeah.
At least the two laying on one side could easily.
Yeah, they're taking the shoulder and part of 30, the, the right, right side of 31, I've seen them up and down, you know, over the past, past year. So that, that has been something that we, we take note of, like I said, talking to Manel and what their, their concerns and needs are and talking to Mr. Smith to the west here. He came out to the Ford, Ford 4H fair and he was saying the amount of trucks that he has for his farm, you know, does a number in the hundreds and numbers in the thousands. So we've been out and about in the community, the Make a Play Festival. We're here, we were at the 4H there. We definitely were out with the 4H, I'm sorry, the Farm Bureau, their members, annual meeting a couple of weeks ago. We out down at McClure's Orchard, now that they're open and operated, just have the information to talk to the public. We've had community hours here in Rochester, whether it's at the library down the street, Harvest Moon up, up the way. So, and answering folks in some of their questions and concerns. So any comments or questions?
Yes, or twice a month.
Yeah, we have community hours twice a month and so, yeah, we try to split between the two counties.
On the website, you got October 21st here at the library from 2:00 to 4:00 and then November 9th at the library from 3:00 to 5:00 is what it says.
Yep, yep. So that was just updated this, this past week. So we're out about and then the McClure's counts as one of, on the southern side and then we're going to be down at the.
14th.
Yeah, and, and Denver, I think Denver Fire, Fire Station, so.
So based on the safety diagram that you've showed us, is there understanding of what's causing the high?
They're taking a look at the incidents and the type of crashes, side swipes, T-bones, rear end. So then they'll analyze that further. So this was the first sweep of that, that incident and now we're, their engineers are in more of a process of locating the amount and, and the frequency like you're saying. And so talking to some of the public, you know, talked to one gentleman at the senior center down the street and he said his car was totaled two weeks ago because a guy pulled out in front of him on 31. Right, so I'd say, well, I'm glad you're okay, sir, you know, that, that sort of thing. So it is, it is a challenge because of folks that are, they're sitting there wanting to either cross or turn and their people are impatient and then they just go, right? So it is, and today's society and then likewise in terms of driver inattention also.
So is you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sounds like we're getting an interchange at 110, 25 is already, I mean, it's already there and then just the overpass at 700 and that's, that's it? Is that set or we're still?
No, that's not set. Everything, everything is, is still on the table. So everything's still on the table. It's nothing that's been said and stone that, going back to the universal alternatives, looking at the different intersections and county roads. You know, if, you know, if the council wants to come up with some recommendations, feel free to, to send it to me. I'll leave, leave a couple of business cards and/or you can go online to our website and directly comment into, to our system.
Well, my question was, you were talking about the severity and one of the areas is 31 and Old 31, Business 31.
We've heard multiple concerns about that and that's documented in our, in our comment system.
And when you said the fiscal year 2025 for 710 and 110.
2027.
Or 2027, sorry. The, was that interchange looked at as part of it or did it not hit the severity level based on the, I'll say the severity of crashes versus some of those other?
For it being an overpass or I'm not?
Well, for, yeah, whether it's a, whether they're looking at making that an overpass or making that an interchange or?
Yeah, I think because of how close 110 is to 700, they wanted 700 to be that overpass. One of the things, I think there have been some incidents with Amish folks on carriages going across 700. So they said that's going to be an overpass, let them get from where there's church and where their homes are. And then 110 just to the north of that will be an interchange.
Well, I guess, and that makes sense. I was thinking more the south, the old 31.
Oh, about the safety aspect. And one of the things I think, I think it's there and they're going to take a look at it a little bit more is that angle of how Old 31 comes in at an angle. You can see, you got line of sight on both sides, but something dealing with that angle at Old 31 coming into 31 is just excellent skill.
South of it.
Yeah.
It's where most of the accidents happen, they're coming northbound.
So I think it's just one of those things where there's time of day, the sun, I, I'm not sure, but we're taking a look at that.
Questions?
Thank you.
Here's Jake, the opportunity for an update.
Thank you.
Do you, I, I do have one more question. As far as information, I think, would it be helpful for us to add a link on our website?
Yeah, definitely. That, 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 that information is, is great. And likewise, if you want some further, like a handheld acrylic stand with QR code, if you have folks coming in and out of here. I, I was talking to the town of Akron and they were saying that some of their larger folks have are Hispanic. And so my stand's in Spanish and they, she mentioned, the clerk was mentioning that most of those, those, that population, they pay their water bill in cash in person. So having that information right there when they come in, that's a good outreach for us. for us.
I can, you know, I'll just, I can make a copy of this and stick, I'll leave it with my office staff, but I can put a link on our website to your NDOT propel site.
Perfect.
Can you come, can you connect with, or do you have social media platforms as well?
Uh, police and fire do. I do not have one for the city.
Okay. The, uh, the, uh, study teams all have, I think they're all US thirty.
Yeah, so our social media is pretty robust, but the linkage of social media between whether it's a, the town or the Farm Bureau, some of the, the chamber, uh, you know, Vetco, definitely it's been a good part of it, so. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
And we don't have any. Full business, ordinance, ordinances, resolutions? Keith Butler?
Good evening. For August, uh, structure fires two in the city, one in Rochester Township, crash fires one in the city, electrical fires one in Newcastle, calls for smoke one in the city, vehicle fires one in Rochester Township, uh, standby for threat one in the city, utility pole fires one in the city, accidents three in the city, one in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, plane crash one in the city, rescue calls one in the city, medical assists twenty-four in the city, thirteen in Rochester Township, three in Newcastle Township, one in Richland Township, lift assist two in the city, two in Rochester Township, gas leaks one in the city, service calls one in the city, cancel calls three in the city, three in Rochester Township, three in Richland Township, one in Henry Township. If my math is correct, that should total seventy-three, inducted run drill. Also would like to report that I think the additional appropriation might be mine.
Yes.
I was doing the budget hearing, we, I, I asked permission to, um, increase the low-end spending of our air packs. Bobby came down and watched our demo. Um, there is a huge sale that they're having and I got with Shada. So, um, by buying now, which we took delivery this week, we're going to do our bulk inventory by serial number tomorrow, uh, we saved seventy thousand dollars. So, went from three forty-five to two seventy-five. I said the money's there, we didn't have to borrow it, we're taking out the bank. So, taking it out three months early versus waiting until the first year. And actually, we probably saved more than that because the first year is going to be a price increase on it. So, the air packs for discount, the first, we got twenty-five packs, seventy bottles, but the first twenty-five bottles are buy one, get one free to match with the packs. The other twenty bottles are at a discount. We receiving the masks, forty masks for each individual at no cost and a protection bag to store those masks in. And, uh, they're coming to do, uh, the fit testing and, and redo the training, um, later on in the next couple of weeks. So, the additional appropriation is mine.
Good job, Keith, good job.
But, um, yeah. And it's actually, I just come across the sales kind of on accident. My, my, my vendor really wasn't even pushing the issue because we made it clear that we're looking at it for next year because I didn't want to put extra pressure on it if you didn't. I said, no, we have the money. So, um, so wrote it up and like I said, they're, they're sitting in the station now, so I'm excited about it, so.
They'd probably be twice as expensive next year. They'd probably be twice as expensive next year.
Oh, well, I don't know about twice, but they're definitely under good mark dub, so. And the fact that I ordered it was a, a week and a half turnaround, that's unheard of. I mean, everything's been waiting, well, we waited eight months for our compressor. So, yeah, I was excited because that, actually something worked post-COVID. Yeah, we got a business class.
Yeah, I was going to say. Cars just.
All right, any questions? That concludes my report.
Thank you, Keith. Two shots?
Uh, for the month of, oh, we're in September, or I'm sorry, August, uh, we have thirteen accidents. We issued ninety-two warnings for sixty-one offenses, thirty-three case reports, excuse me, six hundred nine calls for service, thirty-six lockouts, nine towed vehicles and nineteen people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes. They were lodged for, uh, domestic battery and possession of meth were the leading charges. Other than that, uh, we've got our, we're still currently going through our hiring process. We had testing on the ninth, I believe it was, we had five show up. We did background investigations on four of those. Two of those are moving on to command staff interviews on October ninth. Yep, October ninth, we'll have command staff interviews on the two. And then hopefully they both pass and we'll take those to Border Works interviews. Uh, other than that, we are, talked to the Border Works last week. We're going to trade in our department issued handguns for new ones. These are over ten years old, the ones that we're carrying now. Some of them are pushing ten thousand rounds down the barrel. So, we'll trade these in and get new ones.
Safe.
Uh, we're going to go with Glock forty-five MOS, it's a nine millimeter. Uh, it's optic ready, so.
What do you have with the old barrels?
What's that?
What do you do with the old ones?
We trade them in. They give us credit. We're trading them in. What's that?
So, if I could help you with those barrels? All right, any questions? Thank you. Thanks. Okay. No Randy, no Dwayne, no Marcus. Just got to get away with that every one.
Did you let them off the hook?
I don't.
Sure you did.
I do, okay.
You did? I think it's on the recorder what you told me before the meeting.
Huh? Derek, I'm going to see that with mine, leave.
Mary's not here, Eric's not here, we're not here. Uh, thanks for the mic, we need to do a quick report.
Sweep them off, backwash filter beds. Good callouts, check meters.
See, they don't need to be here.
Um, I'll start, the housing studies symposium, they have it a couple of weeks ago. Um, thirty-five people attended. The reports back from the housing people, they were very pleased with, uh, the response. They liked, there was a lot of give and take back and forth at tables and around the, during the symposium itself, um, they're very pleased with it. So, there's, uh, that's good news. So, we're heading toward an ending of that and, uh, probably toward the beginning of the new year, we'll start looking at, uh, actual constructions sites, things like that. Um, there's one small complication I found out. Tomorrow I'm in Cozy Ausco County for a while, talking with my counter clerk because they're doing a housing study and somehow their housing study has flowed over into Akron. Yeah, I know, I've got the same question. So, uh, that's why we're meeting to see, uh, draw some boundaries and get things fixed, uh, at this point. Um, so that's that. Um, if you haven't gone out to Blacketer Park lately, take a trip out and look at the nice fresh paved dirt. It's not, it's been plowed under, it's straightened out and whatnot. I'm not sure when they're going to start laying, um, asphalt down for the road and taking care of it. But, uh, when I was out there yesterday, um, they were out there working all day long. So, um, it's going to be nice to get Blacketer off the agenda, isn't it? Um, so that's definitely underway. The only thing we're doing now is, uh, I've got to get the money from the city and the county, get it over to Nitsco and then we'll start landing the line out. Um, I've been talking back and forth emails with them on that and that's all that is holding that up at this point in time. And then I just came back from Muncie, that's why it's kind of late getting in. Uh, we had a full day of ready too. Uh, it's complicated, they're making changes. Next time I'll have packages for you, outlines, um, some dates are set concrete, other dates are not. That's what my entire afternoon tomorrow is going to be about. And Peru is, uh, working on setting some dates. Um, one of the things that they will be doing and will be discussing tomorrow is, um, creating some meetings. Um, it's going to be cultural education issues and, uh, those dates will be combined into your package for you, you know? That's about really all it is at the moment. It's kind of, everything's beginning to gel. And I know it's been eight months of, well, we're waiting and waiting and waiting, well, it's building up. So, I think next month you'll, you'll see a, you'll, a breakthrough. And we'll be able to start talking dates and things like that, so.
Any questions?
Yep.
Down the park board, Bobby, your report?
Uh, they met September eleventh. Anthony was there for the golf course. They, uh, are getting some of, a lot of their equipment in. They've also had, uh, some bees get into some electrical boards in the irrigation system, which I guess was quite the headache. I didn't know there was electrical boards that ran that whole system out there, but major, kind of a major ordeal. And then they're also having trouble with the, the new irrigation pump out there, which I believe, I think the conversations is still under warranty. So, that was good. Uh, Dwayne is still working on the pool, is trying, as far as trying to find a leak. He's had some people come in and check that out. Uh, there are some trees in the park, the main park, it's, uh, it's been damaged and they've been, uh, working on getting those cut out, trimmed up or down. They have closed down the splash pad. And we also, that group got invited to, and I'm surprised Eric Binning here is not here, but Arbor Day, uh, September thirtieth, uh, the tree ward, which you're probably going to, so I'll stop talking.
All right, any questions? All right. Todd, you have anything on solid waste, animal?
Uh, solid waste, I was not able to make that meeting, so I don't have a report for them. Uh, animal center have just updates. For the months of July and August respectively, they took in seventy-two and seventy-one cats each, each of those months and adopted out seventy-eight and sixty-six. So, pretty close to what they took in. Uh, the average stay for the cats now is around forty days. Uh, for dogs, they took in thirty-five and twenty-nine and that includes puppies. And they were able to adopt out twenty and thirty-six. So, again, fairly close match there. Uh, average stay for dogs is around twenty days from the last couple of months. So, the dogs are being adopted out much more quickly. Finances have been really good for the center. They are down on donations significantly this year, but the grant money has come up. They've been making more money on the vaccine clinic that they run and they have already almost met their adoption fee budget income wise already through August. So, we've got obviously four more months that they'll be receiving funds for that. So, we hope to offset some of the lack of donations. Yeah, other than that, that's pretty much it.
I will say, I just received their request for their second distribution. So, they usually, they do it late spring, that way they don't take their whole distribution out sometimes, so they split it up, make it easier on their finances. So, that'll go out next week.
All right, thanks.
It's pretty amazing that they're good. Thirty F, thirty F.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Very private. Very good.
Questions for Tom?
And Janet actually has been very creative in finding ways to get pets adopted out. She's actually setting up cages in different pet stores around the region. So, like Logan's Ford and Warsaw and that batch, it's like that.
Good thing.
Yeah.
She's still a, Smith Farm store, they do their, or they still do it too.
What do those stores, do they get anything out of that?
Or, uh, just?
Just the PR.
Yeah, the PR.
That's great. They, they let them set up for nothing.
Wow, that's nice.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tree Board, you have a surprise?
Tree Board met September sixth. One of the main things was their priority work order for a tree at thirteen zero-nine Main Street that was completed. The bill's been submitted for that. They're going to be holding it offline, uh, plan to work through this year because they need to use where it's raining a bunch for planting trees. As Bob alluded, the Arbor Day event is set for September thirtieth at Times Theater, two o'clock. The movie, The Lorax is showing. It is free. Bring your kids, your grandkids, everybody, come watch it. I believe Shana didn't, Eric, post anything for the site or share anything with you or not, or Binning?
Yes, he sent, uh, well, actually he did, Jim did.
Okay.
Jim sent over the flyer for it. I forwarded it to all of our department heads, all the boards and council and, uh, and then I was going to print some and have it hanging here in the office as well, so.
Okay.
But, and ask everybody if they wanted to pass them along to employees.
And the, uh, Mark wants to know, next meeting is October fourth at nine AM. Basically it.
Any questions? All right. Sean?
More important, yes, Water Board met. Most important thing, I guess, is that, uh, I think was given to Derek by the board that the meter testing for the two-inch meters was done. The splash pad has been turned off for the year. They use two million, seven hundred, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred gallons of water for the year in nine months, four, was it, maybe four months, five months? That's a lot of, that's a lot of water there. Actually, they're, we're trying to figure out a way to, yeah, we cut that down, maybe this running too long at certain times, but that was, that was a lot of water gone, yes. The new mini excavator was delivered. And everything's running as normal, which is always the most important thing. There's nobody going on vacation. Derek, you're not here, I couldn't, still couldn't believe that. And, uh, duties in the month of office was done and everything was running fine. Can't ask for any more now.
Any questions? All right, you. And did you have anything legal?
Uh, just by way of an update, uh, we talked about the, uh, potential for Blacketer annexation. I've been on the, I think, eleven, the talk with Dean Rogers, who's kind of a Baker Tilly guru, and comes to annexation to, to, uh, map things out and talk with him and see what their support quo could be in that. But that's all I had.
All right. Shana, you have any, any concerns?
Uh, not any concerns, just an update that Randy sent over. There are going to, we have some areas, uh, where we did our paving and this is outside of the ADA grant, sidewalk grant that we're going to be doing. But we will have some small areas over by Zimmerman and down twelve street that we're going to be doing some replacement of the intersect, of the sidewalk intersections and the curves and the, uh, crosswalks. Where we're going to be laying in some ADA transitions and things like that. So, that'll be this fall yet and then we are actually going to be looking at, Randy's already looking at next year's projects. Some of these stirred up from resident requests. They're going to be replacing some sidewalks residents are. So, whenever a resident replaces a sidewalk, the city's obligation is to maintain the ADA portion of that infants at a corner. So, those will be coming up here, I'd say in the next month, you'll start seeing, because we've got to get it done before concrete freezes. So, that was the only update, Randy passed that on, he brought that into me today to share with you guys. Now Zimmerman's, uh, that area, we are replacing some curb along there just because there's existing curving. So, because it's curving, it's city's responsibility, so we will be replacing that while Zimmerman is replacing their, it's not really a sidewalk, but they have that little two-foot approach in front of their business that they put it in a long time ago to help people so they're not stepping out into grass when they go in for services or anything like that or for viewing. So, they are replacing that, we're just replacing the curving that butts up against it and then the sidewalk nails. That's it.
All right. Thank you. And Tam, motion to adjourn?
Second.
And then say follow up favor?
Okay.